September 11th, 2017 will all rise and salute the flag. This time I'd also like to have our city council and any members in the chamber take a brief moment of silence in recognition of the 16th anniversary of the September 11th attacks on the United States. Thank you. Roll call of members?
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino?
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo? Councilor Rotundo is here, Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council Vice President Keith?
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of August 28th, 2017. Unfinished business, communication from Pasquale Serendulo, 219 Riviere Street requesting to purchase a parcel of land, one foot by 75 feet owned by the City of Riviere which abuts his property.
Any councils? It's Councilor Novoselfsky.
Mr. President, I know we've done stuff like this before and had these situations come up, but I think we have to have a lot of things signed off, and I don't know what really has to be done if it hasn't been done already, but the city has to abandon the property officially if it hasn't already, no? I don't know, the clerk's shaking her head. But I just want to make sure we're in the right foot before we make a move.
Counselor, it's under my impression that this is going to officially go through public auction, or it would go to auction, and then this person would be able to purchase this parcel of land through the auction because we can't just directly sell it to them, correct? And I'm sure that through George Anzoni that all the Ts would be crossed and Is would be dotted.
Mr. President, I know the Superintendent Public Works is supposed to sign, but we really don't know if it was ever used for an easement for utilities, and we've gone through that before, so I would make sure we're covered.
Good point. What I would do is put it in oral motion, the mayor requests the director of finance to include this parcel the next to the auction with the stipulations that you've brought forth tonight. Thank you. All in favor?
Executive session, that the city council, this is on motion of Councilor Keith, that the city council enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation relative to Joseph Cafarelli that has been clearly and eminently threatened.
Mr. President?
Councilor Rotundo?
At this time, I have to accuse myself as I am a potential witness for a possible lawsuit against the mayor. I have to accuse myself now, and I'm going to leave the chamber.
Understood, and after the executive session we'll reconvene to normal business. Thank you, Counselor. Understood. So at this time, we're going to ask that anyone that is not allowed to be in the executive session?
Do a roll call to enter in first.
Before we enter an executive session, we're going to do a roll call.
Roll call to enter into executive session, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo is recused. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the city council will now enter into executive session.
Good evening. So at this time, we're going to reconvene our meeting of September 11th, 2017, and we are going to start right off with zoning subcommittee report. Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this evening at 5:30, the City of Riviere zoning subcommittee met. There was one item on the agenda, calendar item CZ 17-04, an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Riviere relative to the industrial park zoning district. We had a brief discussion on this issue, and the council was in favor of making these adjustments to our current zoning. This was voted out unanimously in favor by the present members of the zoning subcommittee, as well as favorable comments by other counselors that were in attendance this evening. So I asked that this be taken up this evening at the city council meeting, and again, it was voted out favorably by the subcommittee. Thank you.
Councilor, Mayor Rigo?
Thank you, Councilor Keith. Good evening to the council. Tonight you will be taking a final vote on the zoning amendment for the Neco site. This zoning amendment will allow for advanced manufacturing, robotics, and life sciences to move into this property. I don't anticipate there being too much debate, as we already have had a public hearing on this, as well as conversations within the subcommittee. I know that the response throughout the community has been overwhelmingly positive. The residents of Riviere have been seeking for a long time this kind of high-quality commercial development and job creation. I'm confident that Atlantic Management's vision for this property aligns with ours, and that once the zoning amendment does go through, ownership will be able to attract outstanding tenants to that site. I want to thank all of the counselors for their support on this zoning amendment. Thank you.
Any councils? Order on a second, I'm sorry, I'm going to clerk, order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? Roll call.
Roll call on engrossment and ordainment, shall the city council approve the zoning ordinance amending the industrial park district? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Council Order 17-328, communication from the superintendent of schools requesting approval of a conflict of interest form for Nicole Wilson, the school nurse, to enable her to coach junior varsity softball.
Any councils? So just for clarification, Ms. Wilson is a school nurse, and she's also the junior varsity coach. That would be considered a conflict of interest, which I don't think anyone in this room has any issue with. Actually excited that for the small stipend that she would get, she's giving up a lot of time, and has given up a lot of time, to coach the junior varsity team, and due to this, until we're able to vote on it, she's due payments from last year as well, so we want to get this moving forward, and I expect that we all vote unanimously on this, so roll call.
Shall the city council approve the conflict of interest form for Nicole Wilson? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the conflict of interest form has been approved. Council Order 17-337, that's communication from the mayor relative to an update regarding the 2015 Police Department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, good evening to the city council here before you this evening to close the loop on conversation that we had last about the former administration's report on the Riviere Police Department. I want to make sure that we've, that you have all received and reviewed the information, the details, including communications between the former administration and the Collins Center, which was placed in your agenda packet previous meeting. After reviewing, discussing, and answering your questions, I hope ultimately we pivot back to the real issue and the real conversation that needs to happen, which is around solutions that we need for the Riviere Police Department. At this point, the facts surrounding the 2015 report are well documented. My hope is to expand the pool of candidates and leverage the expertise of two well-respected local chiefs to help implement our best practices to our department, and make sure that we're being clear and concise to you and to the public. I cannot control or prevent more mistruths from being stated or written, but what I can control is my commitment to the Riviere Police Department. Regardless of what has been said or what will be said, all I can do is present the facts, and that's exactly what we've done. With all that said, I look forward to turning the page and continuing the conversation with the council about the future. Since our last conversation, I will say that I've continued to conduct ride-alongs with patrolmen. I've continued talking to members of the department and trying to learn a lot more about their experience every day. And while no city is perfect, I think we can all agree on that, I do know that the Riviere Police Department does an excellent job of keeping our residents safe, and especially during a very challenging and ever-changing times. These officers are doing their job, and what they demand from us is to do our job as the leadership of the city, and make sure that we're putting in place systems, policies, and the tools that they need to succeed. Saying that we want to be the best is not just empty rhetoric. It is a goal, and it's a goal I think that we can all share here tonight. This is important, or more important than any election politics or political point-scoring that we may be involved with. This is about the safety of our residents and the efficient operation of the most important department in our city. Over the past few weeks, both Chief Ryan and Chief Kais have been meeting with superior officers and patrolmen, getting a sense of what's working in the department and what can be improved in the department. And while there are areas of improvement, there are also areas of success that we will continue to build on. And I will say that Chief Guido has done a tremendous job of working with both Chief Ryan and Chief Kais to collaborate and make sure that we are implementing immediate and critical changes, as well as working towards long-term solutions. I will say that another step that we've taken, and we're going to be taking, is conducting a community survey. We're putting the finishing touches on that survey, and we anticipate that it will be released to the general public very soon. And the survey will end up giving residents the opportunity to offer their feedback, and the results of the survey will hopefully inform the review that is being done of the Riviere Police Department. The last thing I want to say, and I can't stress this enough, is that my goal here is to move forward with solutions. You have before you an amended ordinance that I would like to see passed, that will give me the flexibility to put the Riviere Police Department in the best possible position to succeed. I want to, I hope that we end up scheduling hearings around that amendment change, and I hope that, you know, we continue the dialogue and continue the conversation. And I made this clear a couple weeks ago, and I'll reiterate it, I'm not looking for a vote right away. I know it is something that we need to deliberate and we need to discuss, but I'm asking to have those conversations. And I'm asking that we all pledge to keep our conversations about this topic focused on solutions and rooted in facts. So with that, I hope that we can continue to have a conversation around the amendment, and, you know, if any of the council members have any questions, we're here to discuss.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. Through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, how long is this group, Mr. Ryan's group, in existence for now?
I am not sure how long they've been in existence.
And who is Mike Ward?
I believe Mike Ward is an individual who works for the Collins Center.
Collins Center. And have you had any communications with him at all in the past year?
I have not, not through email, and I have not had any meetings with him.
Has anybody from the city had any communications with him?
I'm sure that there have been communications with Mike Ward, yes.
I'm going to take this matter of privilege, considering the comments that were made at the last meeting, and I want to make several points, since we're going to deal with fact.
Counselor Rotundo, just so long as you stick to this topic here, if you have...
What did I just say?
It's so long, and I'm just making sure.
What did I just say? I just said I'm going to talk about this issue.
This issue, thank you.
Well, thank you for that recollection, Counselor Novoselfsky, your three-minute rule. While the mayor had quite more time than that, and if you're going to continue to interfere in my three-minute rule, I would ask for I have more time. Number one, it was stated last, the last meeting, that you just got this information during an organizational review last month. Yet the document that you have listed on the City of Riviere website states very candidly that on January 2016, discussion on project with the Collins Center, now I don't know why Mike Ward would be communicating discussions on a project with the Collins Center, reported that material is still pending. You said during the last meeting that this report was buried. If the material's still pending in January 2016, can you explain to me how the report was buried?
Counselor, as you are well aware through the communications that we shared with the council, it was clear through the two-plus years that the report had been worked on that the previous administration had had a lot of conversation and that there had been a lot of communication around that report. And it was clear that the individual who did the report had a meeting with the former mayor, and it was clear that at that point...
This is January 2016 I'm talking about, sir. I'm not talking about the prior administration.
Mr. President, I appreciate if I wouldn't be interrupted.
It's just a question about the report being buried. Can you just answer this question? And Counselor Rotundo, if you have any other questions, just ask the questions. We don't need the long diatribe. We do want to get moving with this.
Well, sure, if you don't want the truth.
Just ask the questions, Mr. Counselor Rotundo.
I did, and I'm getting not the answer...
So can you state your question one more time? Was this report buried, or was it not? Is that the question?
The question is, in January 2016, it says here that the report that the material's still pending, how can it be buried if the material is still pending regarding the report? That's my question.
Counselor, the report had been pending over the two years that it was being done. It was not finalized. The fact is that the consultant had a conversation, had a meeting, an hour-long meeting with the former mayor, outlined the recommendations of that report, and subsequently that report did not make it to the light of day. And the fact is, even in coming into office, I did not know that that report had been worked on, did not know that that report was in existence.
Then how come on February 2016, an email from you that Riviere is working up and running again after mayoral transition discussion and waiting to learn of potential meeting dates?
That's not an email from me. That memo is, I believe, from Kim Craven to Mike Ward.
Well, correction. They're saying that they're contacting the city...
If you read the top of that memo...
I do, I have it right here. I am reading it, and it's saying that it's contacted the City of Riviere. Contacted by Riviere to discuss new review of Riviere Police on May 17th. That's not last month.
That was the initial conversation around the review. We had three proposals for the review. We had Chief Ryan, we had Kim Craven...
But you said that you didn't know anything about it. Hold on here. With all due respect, you said...
Gentlemen, Counselor Rotundo, you asked your question. Mayor, are you finished? I'm not going to have a back-and-forth with either of you. Pardon me, I'm talking right now, okay? This isn't the audience review. Mr. Mayor, are you finished with your answer?
I will say, as I stated in my remarks, I'm focused on solutions.
Thank you.
I'm focused on the fact that we want an ordinance change, and I would like to have that conversation.
Thank you, enough said.
Well, to the issue of your solution, Mr. Keith, just to let you know, the implication is that Mr. Keith's...
Counselor Rotundo, through the chair. Counselor Rotundo, you asked your question. If you have another question, we're going to go to the other councils that may wish to ask questions. This communication in front of us is going to go to public safety, and there'll be plenty of time for more questions there, but we're not going to read off everything that's in front of us that doesn't circulate into an actual question.
Well, first of all, I believe I have a right to personal privilege, as what I had said prior in the last meeting, I was told that I was not being in reality, yet when I tried to bring out the issue like today, I am being shut down by you again.
I'm not shutting you down.
Now, if you want to play politics with this, that's fine, as what you're doing, Mr. Mayor, because quite frankly...
That's enough, Counselor Rotundo.
That's enough for you.
Any other councils wishing to speak on this? Actual questions, please. An actual question. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, to the mayor. As far as working to, as far as working to solutions, as chairman of the public safety, I'm aware that both unions, the superior officers and patrolman unions, have questions about this. Are you negotiating with them?
So I have had discussions with both unions about this, and I look, and I encourage them to actually be involved in this public discussion, because they had some good ideas. And the way that I look at the amendment ordinance, the amended ordinance that we put forward, is that it is a starting, kind of a starting point. And to be able to have that conversation, have them at the table, they were very appreciative of the fact that I actually brought them in and talked to them about it, and said, hey, this is what I'm looking to do, and I want their feedback. So I have had conversations, I will have ongoing conversations with them. I have said that I want them to have a public voice on it. I think there's an opportunity for us to get to a point where we can have a solution on this issue. Again, this is my proposal. I look forward to having deliberation, and I think that they did bring up some good ideas around formalizing the process for selecting a chief, and I think that that is something that we could get into, and I would like to see done through this amendment.
Well, if they, if they do not agree with this, taking the chief out of the city, I would hope that you would agree with the unions and try to work out another solution.
And again, as I said, we had a, what I would walk away with as being a productive conversation with both unions, and they understood that this is my position. They thought there was some room to negotiate and room to have some change to the current ordinance that may satisfy everybody, and I look forward to doing that. I look forward to doing that collaboratively with the entire council.
Any other councils?
That's good. No, I'm sorry, I'm done.
So any other councils? This is going to be going to, I'm going to refer this to Counselor Patch's Public Safety Committee?
Mr. President, since no other council would like to speak, I would like to speak on the issue again, in particular regarding the group that's going to be before us, considering that there is a potential of conflict of interest. Are you refusing to hear this?
Counselor Rotundo, I'm not, I'm not sure this is...
You're refusing to hear this, very well.
Thank you.
Point of information, point of information. Normally, the person who puts a motion in or is the originator of a topic is allowed to speak a second time.
Actually, this is communications from the mayor's office.
I don't think we should...
This is communications from the mayor's office.
I understand.
And there's six...
You're breaking protocol.
There's six, no, I'm not. There's six motions forward in regards to the Collins Center tonight.
And we disagree, okay? I think you should let him speak a second time.
Does he have a question? Counselor Rotundo, do you have one more question?
Sure, I would like, as long as I'm not interrupted by Counselor Novoselfsky again, as he quietly does this behind the scene, I would like the city to know that we're hiring Ryan Strategies, who both Mr. Keith, who is a chief of the police in the city of Chelsea, is also the commanding officer of the current chief of Riviere's son, which presents the appearance of a conflict of interest.
That's good out there.
And more importantly, I would like to point out, performance-wise, that Ryan Strategies has only been in existence since 2016, and they don't have this track record that the mayor has spoken about. It doesn't have this academic performance that one would suspect or ask for in a company that is going to oversee the hiring of a new chief. More importantly, as was spoken by the mayor in the past, that of the two communities in the Commonwealth, only Riviere and Waltham are the only two that do not choose a chief of police outside of the city. What I would say is this, and to include both Ryan and Keith, they were both hired from the ranks, and more importantly, contrary to what was said, close to well over 50% of the officers are chosen to be chief from within the ranks, to include Everett, Chelsea, Baldwin, I think some of all. So, I mean, we have to be aware of these things.
Counselor Rotundo, I agree with you there, and that's one that I'll mention to you, is I think that a lot of our counselors here agree that we would prefer to see the chief hired from within, and that's going to be discussed in this Public Safety Committee with Counselor Charlie Patch.
Mr. President, can I just make one quick...
Moving on, sorry. Moving on.
Council Order 17-329, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the city council with all emails from former chief Cafarelli and Mayor Rizzo to the Collins Center regarding the Riviere Police Department.
Counselor Rotundo, may I politely remind you that you have six motions in front of us tonight? If you choose to speak on five, I do believe a few of your motions are duplicate, so if you wanted to pull two of them together, I think that that would suffice. Any councils wishing to speak?
Well, considering that they're all about emails, 1729 and 1730 would be probably incorporate of the same concept, which would be emails. In particular, I would like any and all emails, as the mayor has released emails upwards of 2015, I don't believe he's released anything thereafter, and I would like those emails released, in particular regarding Chief Cafarelli and Mayor Rizzo, regarding any communication with the Collins Center, as well as any communication from the City of Riviere to the Collins Center, include memos, emails, phone calls, etc.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vice President, I won't hold that against you. I believe that we have provided the council with one of the motions that Counselor Rotundo had requested in anticipation of those, of that request, so we can certainly provide any further emails in 2016. One note that I will put out there is that, you know, around email requests, is that a lot of times, we do get a lot of information requests. We have one outstanding for over 50,000 emails. Those take time to go through, and a lot of times, there's not a lot of interesting information in them, but nonetheless, they take time to go through. So these requests can be accommodated, they just take a little bit of time to put together.
Point of personal privilege?
Counselor Rotundo?
In regards to the mayor's derogatory comments made surfacing about public records requests, I want to put forward tonight, right into the record, denial by the mayor in order to provide myself... in order to provide myself, and I'm sure the keeper of records can substantiate this, as I was denied these records by the deliberative process. Excuse me, I stand corrected regarding Chapter 4, 726II, in which I was denied the record, contrary to what the mayor had stated regarding the Chief of Police Analysis and Assessment Center. And I don't appreciate the mayor basically lying in public, in particular about this issue.
So, Counselor Rotundo, 17329 and 17330. I'm not sure what your statement has to do with these two, but-
It has to do with emails. It has to do with the information regarding asking for emails, and it has to do with the mayor's comments made to me last meeting regarding emails and state law.
Madam Clerk, are we going to bundle these two together?
And I'm more than happy to show the people the emails back and forth to the clerk, who is the keeper of records, regarding the denial from the mayor.
Counselor Rotundo, let's keep the clerk out of this right now, okay?
She's the keeper of records. That's the law.
We do know that. Thank you. 17329 and 17330. We're going to bundle those and put them as one motion? Would you read them?
Council Order 17-329 reads that the mayor provide the city council with all emails from former Chief Cafarelli and Mayor Rizzo to the Collins Center regarding the Revere Police Department. And Council Order 17-330 also reads that the mayor provide the Revere City Council with all communication with the Collins Center regarding the police since 2015. This is to include memos, emails, and phone calls made. Sorry, yep, we have new software here. On the motions, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Morabito? Yes? Counselor Nowosowski?
No.
No? Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
No.
No? Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes? The motions are approved.
Mr. President, maybe we should suspend rules and retake this up in hopes that it does not prevail.
Motion for reconsideration?
Council Order 17-331. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to immediately repair the railing at the senior center. The railing is uprooted, loose, and dangerous, which will lead to injury.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yes, I was at the senior center last week. The railing is uprooted. It can come right out of the walkway. People were going down. It was shaking. I thought someone was going to fall. The bricks are falling off. And I know that six months ago, when Counselor, President Counselor Haas was here, he made a motion to address the mole in the water in the basement. You know, we have seniors in there. Some of them are not in good health. And we should have quality services for them. They don't have really any place to go but that center. A lot of them utilize it. And they shouldn't be, it should be cared for. So, I'm asking if we could spend maybe some free cash money and fix some of these things, because I'm really afraid someone's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna. In response to the motion, I have had conversations with our senior services director, Stephen Fielding, about putting together, getting some quotes for some of the things that need to be done around the building. And he has brought them to my attention, and I've asked him to get quotes to be able to fix them. So, we'll get on it.
All in favor?
Council Order 17-332. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to fully disclose the questions and answers of the police assessment process with names redacted.
Could you repeat that, please? Madam Clerk, would you read that motion?
I'm opening it up. Council Order 17-332. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to fully disclose the questions and answers of the police assessment process with names redacted.
Again, this goes back to the issue, and I just keyed up on my computer in case I'm told otherwise. I continue to ask the mayor for that. At this point, I am speaking to Angela Puccini from the Secretary of State's office in order to get the questions and answers that I have asked through Freedom of Information Act and denied, as I spoke about earlier. And I am hoping that, at this point, the mayor will give us the questions and answers regarding this particular issue, redacting the names.
Mr. Mayor.
Very simply, as I've stated before, we have sent a communication about the exemption around public records law. There is a very good reason for that public records exemption. It goes, it speaks mostly to proprietary information. Obviously, somebody who has a small business and comes up with questions and has proprietary information around their work would want to keep those records free of anyone else being able to steal ideas or anything like that. So, the exemption that is in law, that the council is referring to, is used around proprietary information.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you.
Of information, actually, I'd like to respond to that on twofold. It's my motion.
Correct. And I'll let you speak, and if you'd like to speak after. But here's a simple one. Mr. Mayor, if I was to become, if I wanted to be the sergeant today and I had to take a sergeant's exam, would I need, would I be getting the questions ahead of time? Would they be printed, and would they be public record, the questions for a test?
I do not know the answer to that question.
I believe that they are not. As we all know, the questions of the test would be, it'd be illegal for me to secure them ahead of time. This Assessment Center has questions that they want to keep privy to themselves. And that's their right, as it's their business. So, if they were just to dispose of those questions ahead of time, their business would be moot. I respect the request for information, and I'm glad that we got results of the test. But to give the answers of the, or the questions on the test, proprietary information, we might as well put this company out of business, regardless of what company it would be. The same would go for the police chief's exam, the sergeant's exam, and the lieutenant's exam, or any other exam that we would have. If we had a health, the service safe exam for a health inspector. Those are questions that are not released ahead of time.
To your point, Mr. President, you were prepped pretty good for that, first of all. Second of all, I would say you did not bring this up the last time. Third, the mayor did not make that as the reason why, in the last meeting, it was the issue he said it was, and I quote, and I'm more than happy to key it up for you, it is state law, that he wasn't preventing us from doing it. So, enough. We can go into executive session, and those questions and answers can be provided to the council under executive session in order to protect the proprietary issues regarding it, if you wish to do that. That's allowed.
On the motion.
That's clearly allowed. And more importantly, what I would tell you, as the mayor has stated, he is going to go outside and outside of the system to obtain a chief, possibly.
Counselor Rotundo, on the motion. All in favor? All in favor, aye?
Roll call.
All in favor?
Roll call.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion. Counselor Janino? Sure. It's Council Order 17-332. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to fully disclose the questions and answers of the police assessment process with names redacted. Counselor Janino?
Can I offer an amendment to the motion before we vote on it? Because that didn't even happen. Can we make it so it's an executive session? That way, it's legal-
Absolutely, Counselor. I am more than happy to go into executive session, not to divulge this.
That way, it keeps it confidential.
I totally agree with you.
Add it into executive session. Roll call.
No. No, no. So, amending, just to be a point of clarification, I guess, to amend it that if this was discussed, it would be under executive session.
So, as amended, it would read that the city council enter into executive session to fully disclose the questions and answers of the police assessment process with the mayor.
Roll call.
Roll call, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Morabito? Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
No.
No? Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel Vice President Keith?
No.
The motion passes.
Motion suspend rules?
Counselor Rotundo.
I'd like to take this up for reconsideration in hopes that it does not prevail.
All in favor?
Council Order 17-333. Motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor direct the licensing board, police department, and building inspector to take appropriate action to eliminate the illegal parking of vehicles on the property known as Wonderland.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, Wonderland is being demoed now, and that was as a request of a motion put in by Counselor myself and Counselor Bob Haas, the late Counselor Bob Haas. And since that time, they removed some cars. This past weekend, at the latest count, they have over 1,500 cars parking in there. And those 1,500 cars provide no benefits to the city of Revere. They do not have a license. To get a license, they would require a special permit from this special, from this city council, which in fact, the one they had expired in July 1 of 2015. So, in my opinion, what they're doing down there constitutes a criminal act. If you don't have a license, if you don't have a liquor license, you don't have a license to own a body shop or something like that, you can't operate. And how many times in the past has this city closed down establishments that were not licensed? So, I'm suggesting that these three agencies, the zoning officer, the licensing board, all get together and go down there and issue a cease and desist, fine them on a daily basis for violating a city ordinance, whatever has to be done. To me, this, what they're doing shows a complete arrogance toward the city of Revere and the residents of this city, and it should be stopped immediately. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I agree with Counselor Powers. I said, this is a slap in the face to us. You know, they had it reduced down to about 400 cars, and then all of a sudden, another 1,000 cars showed up. Now, they're not even, and this is, I guess, thrifty that you, you know, in this position. They're actually using other parking spaces that people are doing it illegally. And I'll use the Sanoco Station on Lee Burbank Highway at Furlong Drive. They have about 75 cars parked there. And there was never any license given to them. We never gave them a special permit if they needed it from us. And I just think thrifties getting out of control. You know, and I think we ought to stop them. And I would ask that, as part of this motion, that the license commission not accept any continuances from Wonderland at their public hearings regarding this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would amend it even further to send the building inspector there to give a cease and desist and stop it immediately. They can't operate if we give them a cease and desist. And I believe we're within the law to do that.
Thank you. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We brought this up months ago, that we're losing money to the city for license, that these cars should be licensed. I don't mind them, I don't mind them parking there if they, you know, if they get a license and give the city some money. But why should, why hasn't it been stopped? I mean, we've had several motions over the last year over it. And I don't know why it's been continuing. I don't get down there that often. I'm glad Counselor Powers is on the ball down there in, what, five? But it's a very simple solution is to just tow them, or, yeah, or get the building inspector to stop them. I mean, what else can we do? I mean, we keep bringing it up, but the problem still exists. So, there it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I agree with my colleagues. I think it's a simple issue to fix, file a cease and desist. They shouldn't be allowed to be there. They're not allowed to be there. Remove the vehicles from being there. They're parked illegally, in essence. They're not providing any benefit to the city. They're not paying taxes. They're not paying license fees. They're not paying any fee. They're an eyesore, and they're an inconvenience to the residents of that neighborhood. So, I think that it's pretty simple, and we should just take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think we should do this tomorrow. That's where, I don't think we should wait. I think we should do it tomorrow. So-
Well, I think I would agree. I think we should vote on this tonight. Madam Clerk? Call the roll? Counsel, oh, Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to speak, and I believe so in the audience would like to speak. This has been an ongoing issue. We all know about it. I've asked to do something about it in the past regarding this. They frankly need their license removed, and we need to take legal action against them. And I think we also need to increase the cost of doing business in Revere regarding that issue. So, clearly, they need to be shut down tomorrow. The only person in this room that has that ability is the mayor. So, I'd like to hear from the mayor to see if he could have that done tomorrow with his team. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President, I believe the mayor's present. I'd like to hear if he would be able to do that.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just want to say, this is a great motion, and thank you for putting it in. I would ask that this council votes favorably on this tonight. And I would ask that you further amend the motion to make the fines retroactive to the original date back in 2015 when the permit expired. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Rotundo?
Would the mayor be, would you respond to this, please?
If the council passes this motion, we will implement it tomorrow.
So, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
For you, Mr. President, to the mayor? If you could ask Solicitor Capizzi if it's legal to put that retroactive fee on it, it might be worthwhile?
And there is some legal questions about putting an end date on a special permit. I will say that because this has been, as you all said, this has been an ongoing conversation. And there are arguments on both sides, one saying that you cannot put... A municipality cannot put an expiration date on a special permit. That is their contention, but if the...
And with that said, even though you're the only person in this room that can affect that order, in the end, it's not on your head, it's the law. You can't supersede the law, so people should know that upfront. You know, you're only to the confines of the law.
That's correct.
Madam Clerk, so with the amendments to be enforced as of tomorrow, are you okay with that amendment, Counselor Powers?
I certainly am, and I just want one more comment to see how this was my motion. They are getting, from my understanding, a dollar per day per car. They've got fifteen hundred cars down there. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And I had somebody count those cars that is very good at that business, knows exactly what he's looking for, and that's the number they came back with me. Maybe fifteen hundred plus was, I think, was the answer. So to just to allow this to go on, to crowd our streets and show a complete arrogance to the city of Revere is not acceptable to me, and I will tell them tonight, they're not on my favorite list right now with regard to coming before this council because they're breaking the law, and I don't deal with criminality. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Patch, one final comment?
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. If their argument is we can't stop a special permit, is that their argument?
There is some debate whether or not a municipality can put an end date or an expiration date on a special permit.
Well, in that case, why... What about the fee they have to pay? Should they be paying us the fee then?
I will say that the city has discussed and been researching increases in parking fees. And any increase to the parking fees would affect anyone who has a parking lot throughout the city.
Right. I'm just saying, if they're saying we can't start the... Then how can they start the fee?
They can't. As I said, the city has been looking at and researching what an appropriate fee would be and what other municipalities are charging.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Just quick, if I may?
Nothing seems to be quick tonight.
We already had the fees set in the city at twenty-five dollars per space, you know. But so right now, they owe us for sixteen and seventeen for that eighteen thousand dollars each year, approximately. And we're the city. We set our own fees. You know, I could recommend right now that we, you know, start the ordinance to change a hundred dollars per space.
If my recollection is correct, the... I believe the License Commission has jurisdiction over the licensing of the parking lots, but that was... That's been part of this conversation about Wonderland specifically, about figuring out what the right number is per day, which right now we're charging twenty-five dollars per day, which is low, and...
I thought it was twenty-five dollars per year.
Oh, per year. My apologies. Per year. That's correct.
Counselor Powers?
Mr. President, point of information, the licensing... They have applied for a license. They cannot be issued a license because they do not have the special permit that would allow them to have a license on that facility. So for two years now, more than two years, they're operating illegally. They're taking in dollar after dollar after dollar, and the city's getting nothing for that. Yeah, we do get something. We get a lot of traffic, and we get the noises at night from the horns going off when they're bringing the cars in. So we do get something, if you want to call that something. Thank you, Mr. President.
So Counsel... Madam Clerk, on the motion with the amendments, which one? Yes, we're gonna do a roll call on tonight.
On the motion as amended, that the mayor direct the licensing board, police department, and building inspector to take appropriate action to eliminate the illegal parking of vehicles on the property known as Wonderland. Further, that the building inspector issue an immediate cease and desist order as of tomorrow, September 12, 2017. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito? Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch? Counselor Patch? Is it... Counselor Patch is... Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is absent? And Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is ordered. Counsel Order 17-334, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor request the DCR to install a new pedestrian crossing signal and repaint the crosswalk on Ocean Avenue at the pedestrian bridge for the Garfield School. The crosswalk at this location is completely faded, and the many students from Beauchamp who attend the Garfield are putting their lives at risk crossing Ocean Avenue to walk to school.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Near the overpass where the Garfield School is, where the kids cross to go there, the kids are taking their lives in their hands. They're crossing over four lanes of highway. There's no signals there. There's just a sign that says slow down. It shows a kid. Before we have a tragedy, I'd like to have some flashing lights that they have around the schools installed there, so at least it would slow down the traffic because it is a speedway there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. This... Most of these kids go to Garfield School, which is in my district, and I applaud Counselor McKenna for bringing this forward. I think we're looking for a school zone signs and also a pedestrian button system to be installed there, so... Thank you.
All right. Any other councils wishing to speak? All in favor?
Counsel Order 17-335, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request Mass Highway to replace the damaged guardrail on the northeast corner of 1A at the intersection of Oak Island Street.
Counselor Powers?
Mr. President, the guardrail has been sitting there now for several months, all crumpled up. And I think if you're ever going to replace a guardrail, you do it during the construction season, which would be now. And I'd like to amend that, and I'd like to add the guardrail at the intersection of Mills Avenue on the easterly side of Mills Avenue, at the... Of North Shore Road, which is 1A, and Mills Avenue. That guardrail needs to be replaced also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call? Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Counsel Order 17-336, motion presented by Counselor Keith, that the mayor request the appropriate departments to examine the feasibility of installing raised crosswalks on Park Avenue.
Counselor Rotundo thinks it's funny because I know you've probably dealt with it before. I will just... Any council's wishing to speak on this? Counselor Rotundo?
I believe Counselor Novoselsky had his hand up first.
Counsel Rotundo, go for it.
There is no reason why we can't have this, absolutely none. I don't want to hear snowplows. I don't want to hear any other baloney because that's baloney. They do it in Cambridge. They do it in many cities. This is something that is allowed and performed quite easily in other communities, and they don't have the problems that we've, quote, been given as a hindrance as why not to. Quite frankly, we should have them in every single part of the city in which we have long, thorough fears that have signalization, Park Ave, Broadway, Proctor, I can go through the list. We should have them there. It's a safety issue for our seniors. It makes a crossing easier for them. It makes it better for them because they don't have to step down from a curb to cross the street. More importantly, the idea that it's going to affect a plow, these things are already known prior to that in the city, and it's communicated to them, and that's why we have GIS in our system, and we can also flag them as they do in other communities if, for example, people don't realize they're there. Why we don't do it is silly.
Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vice President, thank you for putting this in. I put it in for my ward about four years ago, and I've always been fought on it by, unfortunately, by Public Works because, as Counsel Rotundo said, they're afraid of plowing, they're afraid of the drainage. This can all be addressed. I'd like to add, if you don't mind, put at the raised crosswalk on Campbell Ave at the public stairs where the kids cross to go to school. It's a speed zone up there, and it's terrible. Ever since they paved the road, it became a speedway. People are avoiding North Shore Road, and they're using Campbell Ave at this point. And I would like to see a raised crosswalk there. We can adjust this, you know, adjust the drainage here so it doesn't ruin certain areas. Certain cities that were mentioned, Cambridge, Malden has them, Salem has them, Chelsea has them, Everett has them. There's no reason that we don't get them in there. I know people are against it for various reasons, but I think public safety is the biggest reason we should have them.
Thank you. Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Counselor Keith. I have mixed feelings about them, but I will say one thing. If we're gonna invest money to put these in, I hope that we fix the potholes in the city first because I think those are a bigger hazard right now than the crosswalks. Those are where people are tripping, falling, and damaging their vehicles, where I think putting the number of potholes and the poor condition of our streets in conjunction with these is a nightmare for public safety. So I hope that we can fix our current roads and infrastructure first, and then, once they're beautifully paved and wonderful, implement these. Because I think at the current state of our roads in the city, with the poor condition that they're in, implementing these on top of it, one, you're gonna put a beautiful crosswalk on a really tough street, and two, it's gonna be more hazardous because you're gonna be dodging a pothole and then going over a raised crosswalk. So I hope that we can address that, and this could maybe be further down the line once we have good streets. Thank you.
Good point, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Counselor Janino, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but I think this is something that the city can tackle both at the same time. If they're using a contractor to put the raised sidewalks up, they can use them to also address the issue of the potholes, which I know that you've been diligently attacking as well as Counselor Keith. So that's my two cents on that part, and I totally agree with you. We should be having that stuff done now.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. And I would agree with you, Counselor Janino, as well, but I did have a community meeting just last week, and one of the number one concerns involving my ward specifically has to do with speeding on Park Ave. I think that every council, especially the ward councils, would attest that they have long roads in their ward. They do turn into be what we call raceways. I think that... I would hope that Park Ave would be a model for the larger, longer stretches of road. If you go down Park Ave right now, you'll see right around the middle, between Jarvis and... Between Genesee and Jarvis, there's a fence that's taken out. There's many trees that get taken out almost weekly. Poles get hit. There's many crosswalks there. It's also... There's a school drop-off area over there. I just think that this is something that needs to be done more urgently because it just takes one out-of-control car to wipe out what could be human life or do more property damage than it's worth. So I'd like to see that happen, and I've requested this before. I do believe that we can find the finances in the budget to make this happen. Mr. DeChico? I'm sorry.
Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street, also co-chair of Commission Disabilities, but I'm gonna speak on both ends of this. I am in favor of this. I brought this up at Traffic Commission meeting probably a year ago, that I was in favor of it with the old fire chief. The negative feedback that you are gonna get, and it is being brought on the state level, is the fire departments. Most of the cities that do have it, they are getting pushback from the fire apparatus because they are... It is causing a problem with sometimes the fire apparatus having to slow down on them for the crosswalks. That's the only feedback on that. The other issue that you have to make sure is with the ADA regulations. In order to do the raised crosswalks, you have to make sure that the sidewalks are fine first before you do it. So like Counselor Janino said, there are other issues too, so we can't just do the raised crosswalks when we don't have the ADA-compliant sidewalks to go along with it. So before we do tackle this, this is a very big issue, a lot more than just putting raised crosswalks.
I agree, and this is gonna go to... I believe this is gonna go to Public Works. All in favor, we can discuss that further, but we could always think of a thousand reasons not to do something. I'm gonna think of a few reasons why we should. All in favor?
There's three late motions. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the City Council with a 2016 audit. It has been well over sixteen months.
Counselor Rotundo? Speaks for itself. All in favor? I... Well, I will state also, I was told that we would probably be seeing the results of this audit by the end of October, so let's hope for that. All in favor?
Mr. President, we should have the results of this audit now.
I would agree with you.
Why at the end of October? That seems very choosing.
I would agree with you there. All in favor?
Late motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to send a letter to HUD's compliance officer relative to the home funding program. Additionally, that a letter be sent to the Malden Redevelopment Authority, attention Dee Birdy, Birdy, sorry, regarding the neighborhood developers' compliance with HUD's home funding program of One Beach and any application for funding for 571 Revere Street, formerly known as the Cove.
Counsel Rotundo?
I have been told by several people that are involved in this particular process that there might be some issues. It also might be relative as to why a limited amount of people were able to get into One Beach Street from Revere. In fact, what I was told, it was a nominal amount, maybe less than five, and that was someone jokingly saying that to me. My understanding is that there's some issues here, and before they go and tackle anything down at the Cove, I'd like to know that they're compliant, and I know that that's their desire. And in particular, their job, my understanding, is to deal with the issues of affordable rentals, and what I'm told, and again, this is why it's part of the questioning, is that they're closer to market rate in some areas, and yet they're receiving funding to make them less than market rate, so twenty to thirty percent of your median income versus fifty to sixty percent. Additionally, I'm also going to question later on what their involvement is with WE and Risen, these groups that are dealing with politics in the city, in particular. Also, their members going door-to-door regarding politics. I find that highly irregular for a company that should be involved with development of affordable housing to be involved in an election. And I'm wondering if this has to do with the fact that people are seeing them in a negative light after One Beach and commenting about not allowing them to build here based upon those issues. So I'm going to be delving into that issue. I would like that the city send a letter regarding the issue of compliance as it affects the people of Revere who are looking for housing, in particular, our veterans and our seniors. And more importantly, I want to point out, I recently had an interaction with a woman who is in a homeless center inland and cannot get housing here in Revere, yet we have people from outside this city and elsewhere who are getting housing before this woman, and her husband was a veteran. So I have a particular issue here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have similar issues with them. I just think that, you know, they've applied for a permit to construct down at the Cove site, which is totally, if allowed, would totally overburden not only the area with traffic, but also the water and sewer services, which are probably eighty to ninety years old, the ones that are down there now. And I did go before the Conservation Commission two weeks ago, and I spoke against the project. I don't think it's the right project for that area, and they were denied in order of conditions. Now, I know they'll appeal to the state, and it's up to the state now to look at the problems that we have in this city. You know, we're under a mandate now to correct water and sewage problems in the city, and other government agencies keep allowing them to build these facilities, and it's not right. The area is overcrowded now, and this is one project that should not be built, and I would ask that if Counsel Rotundo has any information with that, that he share with me, and perhaps we can work in concert to make sure that that project doesn't get built. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Rotundo?
At this point, I would prefer to just use my process of asking questions, and I will share anything and everything that I get with you, Counselor Powers, and this body accordingly. What I would also say is, I think people need to really look at this issue of putting affordable housing near what is supposed to be a showcase for the city of Revere, and what that does with the assessments of that property and changes the valuation of that property. That said, I think we also, as a city... That said, I think we also, as a city, need to start looking into changing our zoning and our ordinance so that for every developer, like, for example, on the beach, that you have to build 10 percent affordable housing within it. And given, I understand the laws, but we should also give preference to Revere residents. I am furious that I had, talking to this lady who's in a shelter with her, I'm beyond words, beyond words, and she applied for one of the, for this property. I am furious, and I'm telling you right now, I'm a dog with a bone on this issue, and I'm not going to stop. This should not be allowed.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo. A very good point, and I think that there's a lot of sentiment with that on this city council in regards to the project you had mentioned, so all in favor?
Late motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor also release all emails from January 2016 to August 2017 between the City of Revere and the Collins Center relative to the Revere Police Department.
Counsel Rotundo?
I believe that, and if you can correct me, Madam Clerk, this is a redundancy. I believe it was sent by error in regards to emails that I have asked to include memos, emails, phone calls regarding Revere Police in 2015. I should just add that if, it's redundant at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. So would you, so would you like to withdraw this?
I would like to withdraw it in the event that I don't get the information that I'm looking for within the timeframe. I will then readdress it in the future.
Thank you, Counsel Rotundo. Motion to withdraw? All in favor? So our next scheduled meeting will be September 25th at 6:00 p.m. Counsel Gigno?
May I have a point of personal privilege?
State your point.
I'd just like to take a moment of silence. The City of Revere lost a very important member of the community this week, former firefighter and veteran Kevin O'Hara passed away, and our thoughts and prayers are with the O'Hara family during this very difficult time, so if we could have a moment of silence.
Mr. Vice President, before we do that, can we also share this with, for Lorraine Zolo, who passed away yesterday morning?
And the McFaulan family who lost their daughter during 9/11.
Thank you, and that concludes tonight's meeting.